And one like and one for.
For the.
Article.
Yep.
Well, no, we didn't.
Oh, I did.
But my head had a two minute.
That's really long.
Yep. And now we can.
Mm.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Um.
That's how I do it.
I'm saying it doesn't mean.
Hmm.
Good.
Eric, could you adjust the focus on that? Well, it's really fuzzy for me. I can't see who's.
My name is.
Joining us.
Wait, do you not have a focus?
No.
I was. I'll figure it out.
Can you guys hear?
Yeah.
Sorry, we had some technical difficulties.
That's.
Wow.
It looks like we're short a quorum right now.
Actually.
Thank you. We're coming here online.
Three.
And we have two here.
Oh, we do have two. Jay is here. Okay.
Five.
Commissioner Lutz and Commissioner Postman. So we do have five, so we can go ahead and start the meeting.
So who do we have?
We have, uh, the petitioner's solar installer.
Okay.
Can you share your screen, Holly?
Yeah, I had that earlier. Let's see.
What was that?
Why am I not?
If we're not full screen, I think you might get it wrong.
Here we go. Can we go back to our, let's see, speaker view?
What are you trying to do, Holly?
I think I was trying to get back to our, where they can see our.
If you hit the green arrow. And then whatever thing you want them to see. I think with the middle on the left.
Yeah, no, it's not. Ah, just getting worse. Let's just get started. Let's just go ahead.
Okay. Sorry for the delay, folks. We have the, uh, November Planning Commission meeting we are adjourning. Um, first order of business is to approve the minutes for last month. As all the commissioners who are online or in person had a chance to review, and are there any questions on the minutes? But I would entertain entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October thirteenth meeting.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Lutz. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Swenson, I believe.
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Postman votes aye. Commissioner Lutz?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez?
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson?
Aye.
Did anybody else join us? Okay, motion passes five zero. Um, next up is to continue the table discussion. Uh, considering a petition of Min Solar on behalf of Arwood Rais for a variance from the square footage of detached structures in an R one residential district, allowing for a ground mounted solar array located in the property at thirty eight oh six Fifth Avenue Northwest. Uh, we had a pretty extensive discussion on this last time. I'm gonna let Holly kind of do a recap and reset, and just so the folks know, I know we have at least one person joining us by Zoom, and we have probably a dozen folks in here as well. Um, concerned citizens that we'll get to at some point in this discussion as well. But first, let's just sort of set up what we talked about last month. Holly, will you take it away?
Yeah, so this property is located at thirty eight oh six Fifth Avenue Northwest. Um, it's owned by Arlo and Beth Trees. Um, they were seeking a variance for an addition of, uh, solar, ground mounted solar array on their property. Um, the, uh, variance, uh, well, the limitation was on the square footage of accessory structures. So the solar arrays are considered accessory structures with regard to the allowed square footage on an R one residential property. Um, the property has existing structures, um, from, uh, prior to its annexation into the city that are grandfathered, um, in or, uh, considered non-conforming uses. Um, they do count towards the square footage limit, so, um, with a fifteen hun- a little over fifteen hundred square foot limit for properties over one acre. Um, this property of fourteen and a half acres, um, has roughly thirty eight hundred square feet existing and would add another twenty five hundred square feet with the solar array. So they are looking at around forty seven hundred square feet in accessory structures, structures, square footage over the, uh, fifteen, just over fifteen hundred allowed. So, um, at the last meeting, uh, we looked at, uh, a GIS map, um, looking at the location of the home on the property. Um, and most of the structures, as well as the proposed solar array, um, which were all like located to the south of the property. Um, the property, uh, is adjacent to, uh, six additional properties, neighboring properties on the east. I mean, they, they also have properties on the west. Um, but particularly, um, it was particularly of interest to the neighbors on the east on a cul-de-sac because the, um, solar, pro- proposed solar arrays on the east side of the property where it would be visible to those neighbors. Um, one of our commissioners inquired whether the, the array would be, if the array was roof mounted, would they need a variance? Um, we explained that, or I explained that, um, a roof mount would not need a variance because it would not be considered an additional accessory structure. Um, and the existing buildings are grandfathered in. Um. Commissioner Lutz asked, uh, the reason for location, being that, you know, it's a large property. Um, and that it was their location that did not need to be, um, so close to the neighbors. Um, Mr. Kreidermacher, the, the, um, or Kreidermacher, the, uh, representative from Min Solar would do the install, uh, indicated that the shed on the front of the property, um, well, as far as, um, roof mounted, um, the property, the accessory structures on the property, um, had the wrong slope and, um, would not meet the square footage requested, um, which is why they looked at ground mounted instead. Um, they were also concerned about, um, location near, uh, the electrical meter. Um. The petitioner was asked it, or, or Mr. Kreidermacher was asked why the large size was requested, so the four, um, uh, solar arrays versus maybe, you know, a smaller number. There was, uh, uh, an application for a USDA grant. Um, and the, um, it was just economically more, uh, uh, beneficial to the petitioners to do the four versus some other smaller number, whether it be two or one. Um, there are some questions about whether the backyard or rear of the property would be feasible. Um, there was some concern about removing trees in that area. Um, we discussed whether screening would be sufficient. Um, at this point, um, one of the neighbors, um, Scott Kaplan, who appeared at the meeting, expressed concern over the view, his view of the solar array that's being proposed. Um, there were concerns that it's in a grassy area that, in their opinion, was not, uh, being maintained and felt like it would, uh, take away from the uniqueness of the area where they currently live. And wished it would be on a, in a different area of the property. Um, the neighbor was concerned that it would take years to create, uh, screening. And that because it's such a large area, we're concerned it might not be feasible. Um, let's see. Uh, Mr. Kreidermacher was asked if a solar survey was done on the private, or on the entire property. Um, only the spot where the owner requested installation was reviewed at that time. Um, there was a benefit to completing this in twenty twenty versus twenty twenty one due to a federal tax credit that's decreasing over the years. Um, let's see, there was concern, uh, about this being, uh, installed on a, an agricultural property. At least that's how it's described, although it's zoned residential. And there was some agreement that, uh, the installation could alter the surround, or the characteristics of the area. Um, and then we discussed, um, whether, uh, the neighbors and property owner wanted to meet, uh, versus making decision immediately. Um, so this matter was continued, um, to bring forward to allow the parties, uh, a chance to potentially, um, e- explore some mutually acceptable, uh, options. And that brings us to now. And in the meantime, I did get an email from Scott Kaplan, um, and that was included in your materials. If you have any questions about that, um, let me know. And then there was another proposal that was presented. Um, let me see if I can pull that up here. So the Drees had, um, shifted the proposed installation, uh, to the north, um, which is this document here. See if I can flip that. So then two of the arrays would end up kind of behind the neighbor's garage. Um, and then it has some information written on the bottom about setbacks. Um, I also did get, uh, let's see. I also got an email today from Amanda Green, who is one of the owners, or one of the neighboring property owners in the cul-de-sac. Um, she just indicated that she would not be able to meet, or make the meeting in person. Um, she, I'll just quick read this to you since she's not here.
I'm just have one more questioner. Um, can you just make sure that I have a try to get in?
Oh, okay, hang on.
If you go to the very top bar, Holly, what is sharing is?
All right. Yep.
There should be a little participants one.
Yeah, it doesn't look like.
I have emailed him to try, but I haven't heard back, so.
Okay. Oops. Um, okay, I'll just quick read this to you. Um, she just, uh, said, hi Holly, we are unable to attend the planning and zoning meeting Tuesday evening, but wanted to pass along some thoughts. I believe others from the neighborhood will be there, so apologize if this is repetitive of what's shared by them. Um, so she's actually going first. Um, we appreciated the opportunity to meet with the Drees and their representative regarding the solar panel proposal. Unfortunately, the solution offered was to move the panels several feet further back, which does not improve or change the fact that all of the neighbors on our end of the street will still be viewing them from our yards and main living areas within our home, homes. Uh, solutions offered by us slash neighbors include moving the panels to the opposite side of the home on the property or further into areas of the property where rejected is not possible due to connection issues or the ground not being flat enough and/or it being too costly to make the land suitable for panel placement in a less obtrusive area. Unless something has changed, it seemed very, uh, very much seemed like we're unable to come to an agreement about the issue. In looking for other properties located throughout town that have similar solar panels, we noticed two homes both look to be within city guidelines regarding size, which is parentheses, which is different from the proposal at hand, and parentheses, and in both situations, neither panel displays were in direct view of, for other neighbors. In fact, the homeowners of these panels look to be in the ones, look to be the ones that would see the panels more than anyone, uh, which is opposite of our situation as the placement of the proposed panels is on the side of the property. The homeowners don't spend time on and can't see from inside. We appreciate the opportunity to voice our concerns and attempt to maintaining the uniqueness of our neighborhood. Kyle, Kyler and Amanda Green. Um. I guess this would be a good time to open it up to, um, probably, I guess, the petitioner, maybe Mr. Kreidermacher could, um, detail out what the new proposal entails and how, um, that was communicated to the neighbors perhaps, and then the neighbors can respond.
Sure. Yeah, this is Paul with Min Solar. Um, the Drees family did organize a community discussion on Wednesday, October twenty first at five thirty P M. Um, three neighbors showed up, Sharon Kaplan being the first. Uh, the other neighbors were either busy or did not care to participate in the discussion. At the discussion, they asked, uh, to see a picture of what the groundbound solar array would look like because they didn't really know how they're laid out and constructed. So I showed them a picture of the groundbound array that I just built that day for, uh, Mark Schaefer in a, you know, a main residential area of Austin. Um, next, uh, we discussed that moving the solar array to the, to the back of the property was problematic due to long distance, uh, the power needs to travel back to the Austin Utilities Transformer. Austin Utilities and I have already discussed utility voltage to ensure that we won't have problems at the proposed site, which is still about three hundred and fifty feet back to their transformer. Um, plus I tried to explain to the couple neighbors there that the, if we went to the back of the property, it would probably be one or two long rows of panels instead of the four rows. Um, and that, uh, the big long rows would actually be more noticeable to them, um, back there just because they're, they're longer. Um, you know, I, I tried to mention that, you know, I built, you know, about two hundred of these systems now, and typically these four row, uh, kind of like postage stamp layout ones are the least noticeable for size. Um, you know, we then proposed that we would move the, that postage stamp type layout, you know, about thirty five feet farther north from the original layout so that the two back rows of the solar panels would primarily be behind the neighbor's, uh, steel pole shed garage there. Um, the garage would be much taller than the solar array and block much of the view. Um, the two arrays south of the garage would have those existing, uh, scrubby trees near the fence line to help screen the view. Um, if the, those trees ever died, something else could be planted on the fence line as a vegetative screening. Um, ultimately, uh, you know, the Drees family feel that they, you know, bought a fifteen acre property for the ability to use it to the best of their family needs. The Drees family believes in solar power, along with many other citizens. Now, solar is a lawful structure in the zoning district and, and, uh, if, if the property was still in just Mauer County, there would be no public hearing or variance or public planning zoning meeting required. Um, you know, we feel that most citizens look at solar as an environmentally good thing and feel that it's something that local and state governments look to promote. Um, you know, on the, the national level, the, you know, the Democratic Party is pushing for legislature that we require millions of homes across the country to be powered to solar energy. Um, you know, this is, I guess this is my opinion, but it's, to me, it's a little hypocritical that, uh, the neighbors on the cul-de-sac don't wanna, they wanna maintain this, uh, scenic view to the west, but, uh, from the Drees property looking to the east, the, the, there is no scenic view anymore because the houses are kind of jam packed all in there. Um, but most importantly, no, no neighbors have a patio or deck that look towards the direction of the Drees property. Um, the, at the last meeting, I think Scott Kaplan said the Drees' closest neighbor uses that side yard south of their secondary garage, as they don't have a backyard, but, but looking at their property, uh, that's not really true because their, that property's patio is actually to the north of their house. Uh, they got a patio and possibly add a swimming pool or still have a swimming pool up there on the north side. Um, you know, I built, um, many of these ground mount solar projects in towns all around the state. Um, I recently finished one up in the town of Winona on a similar type of properties, the Drees. Um, you know, some towns like Winona have adopted, uh, special solar policies that don't even require planning and zoning meetings anymore and, uh, I guess the finish, I, you know, I built about five of these system, these ground mounted systems inside the Twin Cities already. Um, and I have two of these large ground mounts like this in the side, in the, in, in town of St. Charles and other cities in southern Minnesota here, so. I guess that's, uh, about my comments to it. Uh, you know, it, it, to us, it's a good suitable loca- location, uh, you know. With screening, with that shed there, those trees, it's, it's, uh, there, there's really no spot in the, the rest of the property that would be any better work any better, so.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Kreidermacher. We'll probably come back to you at some point.
Do we need the mic?
Um.
I wanna ask him a question if I could.
Sure, we've got a question from Commissioner Lutz for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Kreidermacher, this is, uh, Commissioner Lutz. I had a question with regards to the, the racking for the panels. The mechanical drawings that we had in our packet are really tough to read because they've been, uh, copied so many times. I wanted to verify the actual height of the top panels with respect to grade.
Okay. Um.
I believe it's right around ten feet, but I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah, it's right around ten feet. I was trying to get the actual drawing up. I have no problems with my computer here.
Oh. Holly's looking for that, Holly?
It's actually right at about nine feet. Uh, the drawing shows a hundred and eight inches.
Okay, and that's from grade?
But, uh, but that shows, uh, twenty eight inches off the ground, and we're typically putting them more thirty, thirty two inches off the ground, so. You know, uh, a few inches over nine feet or nine and a half feet max.
Okay, thank you. And Holly, would you say that split rail fence, it's not a split rail, that white rail fence that's there, the Drees fence, is that about four feet? That's what I would guess it to be. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just for the record, um, Mr. and Mrs. Drees are here, and they just, they, they agreed with the height that Commissioner Lutz, uh, proposed.
All right. Well, so I think what I'd like to do now is turn it over to anybody who wants to speak on this matter from the community. Um, if there's just one person who sort of wants to talk for the group, that's all right. If everybody wants to speak, that's okay too. All I ask is that you state your name and address, uh, when you begin speaking. And, um, if we have any questions that need to go back and forth from the commissioners, we'll make sure to let you know. So who would like to start?
Um, do you wanna just, uh, you maybe indicate who's here?
Who's?
For the record, and then just, you know, may, and then your name and address.
My name?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, from the cul-de-sac, we have, uh, the Hollies, um, both husband and wife here. Annette Schuler is here. Mary Olson is here. My wife and I are here. Um, Christine, um, just left. Um, Amanda Green, uh, is home with a kid that's been exposed to COVID, so she has to stay home there. Uh, my name is Scott Kaplan, uh, thirty seven oh five Fifth Avenue Northwest. Um, I spoke last month, um, pertaining to this. There's nothing really new from our side. Um, if they have any questions for us, I was, I didn't hear quite the, the information on the panels. Uh, we were told they were sixty feet long, four of them, at twenty five hundred square feet. Uh, the math sounds like about six hundred square feet per panel, which makes that about ten feet high of panels, and if they're like thirty two inches off the ground, you're looking at now maybe eleven, twelve feet off the ground. Is that true? No. Is it twenty five hundred square feet of panels, roughly?
I don't know how many square feet there are.
Arlo?
I don't know.
That's, the square feet isn't the height, it's the north to south distance by the length.
Sixty feet long. Sixty feet long?
Yep.
Yep.
In order to get the square footage, don't, don't.
The panels, the panels, north to south, they're about eleven feet, and they're about nine feet off the ground.
So the height is off the ground, and then sixty feet long by about ten, eleven feet wide.
Correct.
We still, um, are concerned with, with our, again, unique neighborhood that we keep talking about. And this is a residential, single-family dwelling area, and, uh, we have to look at that. And, uh, you can, you can talk about we have backyards or this and that. We have all people, we all face that, that area, and we do spend time in our front yards. And, uh, the, the. Yeah, it's the front of everybody's house, and, uh, we have to look at that, and, and that is not what we have, have lived in that area a number of years. Um, many of us have lived there a number of years. And, uh, I, I'm all for solar energy. I, I have never been against that stuff, but the question becomes, do you want it in your yard, in your backyard, in your front yard? And, uh, the neighborhood pretty well has said, we've got letters in from people that aren't here. We've gone to the meetings, and that we did not get any answers that we were satisfied with.
All right. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this matter?
My name's Krista Hawley. I live at thirty-seven eleven Fifth Avenue Northwest. And what you're, can I go up and show you the pictures up here? Because I don't think you see the whole view of what this is. Okay. You can't do that?
Uh, yeah, I can slide it down a little bit.
I want to be able to show you how much property he actually has and where he's putting these or where he's proposing, as opposed to the other houses. They never showed the other houses looking at where he's proposing and the opportunity for him to put it somewhere else. Again, nobody is against solar panels.
Into, into the mic.
Nobody's against solar panels.
Holly, can you use the, the mouse to sort of point where she's pointing so the folks on Zoom know what she's pointing in?
You had a picture that just showed his place. I wanted to see that again.
Oh, okay.
Well, technically, this, this is all his property, not just here. You guys only showed this. He goes all the way back here. And we're over in this area, so our houses are all facing this. There's nobody back here. He's got property between his house and his shed he could put him. He could put him in his backyard. Why do they have to put him right here? It's not like that's the only place he's got. Arlo, that's what we look at. You know this when you moved there. We don't care that, I mean, we don't, we're not opposed to solar. You're trying to ruin, but our houses all face that way.
Sure.
That is our view. My kids, my grandkids, everybody plays in the front yard.
The, the problem is, is even if you went to the back fence line of the pasture, they're in front of the trees, that would put us five hundred to six hundred feet back to the, to the transformer. And electrically, we would have, we would have problems.
So is that our problem? We have to pay for that? It's not a business district.
There's just no paying for it. That's just the way electricity works.
Well, I'm just saying, why does, why can't you just pay a little extra to make it work? He's got fifteen acres. That makes no sense to me.
The utility transformer is set in a spot and the, the utility won't move the transformer.
So then you put them on your buildings like they allow.
I, I will speak for myself, and if any of the commissioners want to jump in with this, I actually did drive out to the property just to kind of take a look so I could get a better sense of it. Because it is a unique prop, it is a unique area of Austin. I, you know, I could see, it is zoned residential. You know, when we look at city codes, we only have certain things, residential, industrial, commercial, so. I, I forget the, the neat phrase that you guys use, like, you know, rural residential or something, and I can appreciate that because it is. I mean, I drove on a gravel road to get there. As far as when we look at stuff from a legal sense, we have to look at it as an R1 district, which is a residential district. Regardless of if it's a normal six thousand, you know, square foot lot, or if it's the fifteen acres that Mr. Dries has, so. Were any of the other commissioners, just so you folks know, did anybody else get a chance to go and look at it?
I did.
Okay, so Commissioner Lutz, did anybody on the, on Zoom, were you able to go and see it as well? So we, at least a few of us have had a chance to go and take a look at the property, just so you know. Mr. Dries, would you like a chance to kind of address the, some of the concerns of the commission here?
Sure.
Okay, can we get him a microphone, Holly?
Yeah.
And go ahead and state your name and address, just for the record.
This is Arlo Dries, address three eight zero six Fifth Avenue Northwest. Where do I start? The location we chose, we chose for, we put study into it. I mean, we didn't just haphazardly say we're putting it here to make life miserable for the neighbors. That was not our intention. We chose that spot because on the west side of us, we've got all the rain coming from across the road, going under the road and through that pasture, and we got a gully, so that's not really feasible. Back behind the fence, there's hills and, and terrain that make it not feasible, and the way back part of my property, there's no way we could get the electricity from there up to the, the, the Austin Utilities Connection. Paul is not the first person I had out there to check for solar. The other person I had out there said the pasture, even if you could put it in the pasture between us and the Nelsons on the west side, the Nelsons' trees were too big to really afford a good product, electricity production. I chose the spot I did initially because I figured it was on the east side of my house, and who cares if they got a view of my house? But apparently, people liked the view of my house and my barn and my other buildings out there. It's, to me, it's a little frustrating because they didn't come talk to me. They didn't, didn't, you know, ask what it's about. The one person that did said she was fine with it when she talked to us, but then she's here opposing it. You know, I can, I'm fine with putting it anywhere on that, that east side. It's the only really place I can. If I offered to put up, you know, a row of arbor vida to block, to shield the view even more besides the four-foot white fence and the other trees and the, the garage that's blocking it, and Sharon said, "Don't even go there. It's not going to happen," so. You know, I've, I've tried to work with them at that meeting, see what I could do to put up a vegetative fence. I don't know what, if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Who did move it back, so it's more behind the shed, I figured that way they could still see my house or whatever.
Yep, no, I understand, and I, I did see the, the moving of the location to be a little bit more behind the neighbor's garage. Are there any commit, any questions for Mr. Dries from any of the commissioners on the call or in the room right now?
So your second proposal, which was to move all four banks of the panels to the north, just, just to be clear, that in fact would add cost to this, right?
It would drop the amount of electricity that would get to the transformer because it's traveled a farther distance. And I can, I will be able to, despite what was said earlier, I will be able to see the, the panels from my house.
I'll just ask a question that I asked in the last meeting, but since you're here, so. For me, the struggle is not so much the solar panels, because we do have a solar panel policy for the city. We have solar panels in many neighborhoods, including mine, that are more residential looking than this. They, again, are zoned the exact same way. Where I struggle with this one a little bit is the size of it, because it is more electricity than your property would need sort of to run itself a little bit. I, I, I understand the desire to have more panels. It's probably a little more economically feasible. Did you take a look at any possibilities of reducing the amount of panels and if that would still work for you to sort of shrink the size of variance needed for this?
That would put the return on investment out farther. I did look at that.
Please pick into the microphone.
Sorry, that, that moves the return on investment out farther, a couple more years. As with anything, you know, from my perspective, you, when you're doing a project, you want to maximize your return on investment as soon as possible, so. That's.
The other thing is, we, we applied for a USDA grant for Rural Energy for America, and the grant is partial to systems of this size. Smaller systems don't score very well and get funded for the grant, so.
I share the same concern as Commissioner Postma. In addition to the objections that your neighbors have, my concern really is about the overall square footage. And I'm not hearing any willingness to make concessions there, which is a concern.
Holly, can you remind me, can you take a look at just where we're at square footage-wise with what's generally allowed and how big this variance is?
Yeah, just give me a second here.
Can somebody get her a mic?
I believe it's in the neighborhood of two and a half times.
Uh, yeah.
What's allowed?
So, let's see. The allowed for over one acre is one thousand five hundred and eighty-four square feet. The existing accessory structures are about thirty-eight hundred square feet. The proposed is around twenty-five hundred square feet, just a little over. So the total accessory structures would be six thousand three hundred thirty square feet. So the variance request is four thousand seven hundred forty-six square feet. And I can just remind you that the, the items you should consider, the statutory requirements for granting a variance are, one, that the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. Two, that the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Three, that the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision, and that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the provision. The plate of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. The variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district where the affected land is located, and the variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area.
And as a reminder, this is a recommendation to council?
Yes, yes. So the final decision would be made at the next council meeting, presuming a decision is made here tonight.
I want to give kind of one more chance before we open this up to the commissioners for any more discussion. Does anybody else who had anything they would like to add to the discussion? All right. So commissioners, this one, you know, lots of times we get to pretty easily go through things up and down. This one's a little stickier, I'd say. Obviously, we had two meetings on it. I want to open it up to any more discussion or thoughts, questions that you guys have.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I went out and looked at the property as well. And I went out, I believe it's Fifth Avenue, even when it turns to the north, it's still Fifth Avenue. I'm not sure, right into the cul-de-sac there.
Commissioner Lutz, do you want to?
Yeah. Okay, I went out and looked at the property as well, and I believe it's Fifth Avenue where it turns to the north. It's still Fifth Avenue in the cul-de-sac. And from sitting there and looking straight to the west, towards the Dries property, I thought at the time that I was there that the panel height was ten feet. No, I think he said it was nine feet, but regardless. Using the white rail fence that's there as a scale, if you look straight across the sightline from that road, looking west toward the Dries property, the, the sightline for the top of the panels in at ten feet, they will come right up to in line with basically the top of the windows on the side of the Dries house. So also, these panel arrays sit in an east and west orientation. They're sloped to the south. So you're not looking at the whole array from any of the homes on that eastern side. You're looking at just the end of the rows. So you can actually see there's almost, I think it's thirty to forty feet between the rows. So it's really just where there's two of the rows there that's going to obstruct your view. And what it's obstructing your view of from that position is the side of Dries' house, the bottom few rows of siding before it gets up to his windows. You'll still see across the top of the panels, and you'll see exactly what you'd see even if the panels aren't there, which is the side of his house. So I'm not sure. I'm understanding how that changes the essential character of the surrounding area by having the panels there as far as those sightlines. The other thing I noticed is that other than the, I don't know if I'm seeing it right, but the Sepinon residence, which is the one that actually borders the Dries property on that side, all of the others, if you scale it out, they're at least three hundred feet from those panels to their houses. That's a football field away. That's, that's quite a ways for those sightlines to be able to say that that, that these panels would change the essential character as well. And I just wanted to verify, at our first meeting, my biggest concern was on that Sepinon product, property, the building that we see in the aerial photos, which is right next to the Dries fence. I was concerned about how close that residence would be to the panels when they look out the back there, but that in fact, when I went out there and looked, if I'm not mistaken, that's not a house at all. That's a garage and a, a shop, a storage. There was actually quite a bit of stuff piled around outside and stuff, so. Aesthetically, I don't, I guess I'm not sure what the concern is about what these panels look like from the side that's that objectionable. I guess, I believe that Mr. Kreidermacher said that he showed him photos of what the panels look like, based on another installation of ground mount panels, very similar. So I guess I would like to know if any of the residents want to make that more clear to me, what specifically the objections are to the aesthetics of the panels themselves and that location, but given all of those factors, I came away feeling that I just couldn't meet the requirement in our, in our guidelines that this would take away from the essential character of the surrounding area.
Does anybody want to, does anybody want to speak or address the comments that Commissioner Lutz, Lutz just made?
Yeah, Scott Kaplan again here. You said the sightline from our road to that property, these panels will only be to the top of the garage windows?
If you look, if you're sitting on the road at the cul-de-sac and looking straight across to the west where they'll be, right towards his house, that fence that's there now is four feet. If you look six feet above that fence and make a sightline straight across, it's about even with the top of his windows on his house.
Six feet above that fence? Okay, and these panels, these panels are going to be ten-foot panels plus another three foot off the ground.
The top of the panels is ten feet high.
They're going to be higher than ten feet, according to the math.
Ten feet high.
According to the square footage, it has to be. Each panel is sixty feet long, is what we were told. The, the dimensions were sixty feet.
Okay, let's, let's clarify. There's four banks of panels. There's a total of one hundred and thirty-two panels. Each panel is roughly three by five feet, and they're in a, they're in a portrait orientation, which means they're vertical, two high, sixteen or seventeen across, depending on which bank you're looking at.
Is the, is the overall dimension sixty feet? They said it would be five feet from that fence.
That's the length of the row.
Sixty feet wide.
At the end of that row, that rack, those panels are roughly forty-five degrees. That dimension will be about eleven feet, and the top of it will be ten feet off the ground. So that's the height of these. The overall height of the entire array is ten feet.
So you're looking at one picture of looking at those panels from one spot, not that we have to see it from different angles as, as residents around that circle. Because you're looking all the way over to Greens that have to look at that thing.
Because you're looking all the way over to greens that have to look at that thing the most of anybody as far as direct look.
Yeah, the greens are even farther away yet. They're almost four hundred feet.
It's still in the vision. It's, it's, it's about being in harmony with, harmony with the area. It is not in harmony with the area.
And if the panels aren't there, what do you see now?
I see grass. I see animals.
Well, I see his house. And then I see his barn behind that, a big white building.
It's a residential area. Yeah, you're going to see homes.
Between seeing the side of some solar panels or seeing a house or barn. I mean, if there was a woods there or a pond or something like that, I would agree with you. But I don't, I'm not sure what these, what sightline it is that these change.
I don't see how this is, is harmonious with the area, putting that size paneling system in a residential area. There's where we stand. This, this group here stands that way.
Any other thoughts from any of the commissioners? I know for me, this one was, it was a tough one. I, I do, I will sort of agree with Commissioner Luce that I'm not necessarily sympathetic to the concerns of sightlines or vision. It's a pretty open area. We have, we have panels that are much closer to neighboring properties in other parts of Austin, you know, because just most residential areas have much smaller lots. In my southwest neighborhood, I walk past one or two pretty much every time I do a loop. It's a little, the first time you see it, you're kind of like, oh, wow, there's, there's some panels. And then it just sort of blends in with everything else. I don't necessarily consider it unharmonious. I, I also do appreciate that the Dries have made an adjustment here to sort of hide it a little bit, if you will, behind the garage as much as possible. I, I do struggle with the size of this one just because it is larger than some of the ones that we've approved in the past. But I also understand that it is a, you know, kind of a bigger area and it is on a fifteen-acre property that he's putting it on. So it's not a normal residential lot necessarily. So I guess those are sort of the thoughts that I have taking a look at. I guess the other thing I'll say, especially when it comes to sightlines, I did notice that most of the neighbors were, they, they were definitely, it was towards the beginning of their front yards that they would look at. But there also are a lot of trees in almost all of those yards that, you know, most of the year have leaves on them that probably isn't a huge view necessarily anyway. But again, that's sort of germane for me in this argument. I think I'm more coming down to looking at the size of this or not. So I don't know if any of the other commissioners want to weigh in on anything. If not, I would entertain a motion as how to move forward with this onto city council.
Would you like me to go over the criteria?
That'd be great.
Again, okay. So this is a recommendation to council. And the statutory requirements for granting a variance are that the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code, that the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision, and that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the provision. Practical difficulties are described as the plight of the landowner being due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. The variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district where the affected land is located. That the variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. And economic considerations alone shall not constitute an undue hardship, undue hardship or practical difficulties if reasonable use of the property exists under the terms of the ordinance. In this instance, I mean, there were a variance required whether they put in one or three or however many.
Yeah, because the properties existing that are already over the size, I'm sure were grandfathered in when we zoned this as residential.
Yeah, so the, you know, the, the planning commission can recommend approval, denial or approval with conditions.
Anybody want to entertain a motion?
There's no other further comment from the other commissioners. I'll, I'm willing to make a motion that we recommend to council to approve.
So we have Commissioner Luce who's recommending to approve. Do we have a second on that motion? I'll go ahead and second that motion. Let's go ahead and open it up for any further discussion. I believe we have five commissioners total. All right, well, if there's no more discussion, then I am going to do a roll call vote. And this is to approve the amended application with the moved panels onto city council. Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson.
Aye.
Commissioner Luce.
Aye.
Commissioner Postma votes aye. So the motion passes four to one as a recommendation onto city council. I would encourage anybody interested in this, I, I know it's another meeting to have to go to, but I would reach out to your city council folks and I would attend the meeting if you are concerned with how this is going to go one way or another, because I can tell you that they do listen and like as much input as possible. And I do appreciate everybody who took the time to be here tonight. Holly, do you have anything else for the commission?
No, that was the only matter for tonight. Oh, right. So the, right, the council meeting will be. Yeah, I'm just going to check the calendar here. Oops. Hang on, hang on. Oops, edit. Okay. So then the council meeting will be Monday, November sixteenth at five thirty. You can attend in person at the, here at the same place, council chambers. Or I can get you a link, or our city clerk can get you a link to appear via Zoom.
All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Oh, hey, thanks. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Commissioner Luce, Luce moves. I will second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Luce.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Salas Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Swenson.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Now we're adjourned.